I've talked a lot about it.
Sorry, I'm called, I didn't mean to be brutal.
Don't be silly.
I did.
I know my old daddy, don't worry.
He did? Yeah, well, I don't have to say anything to you because you always know what I am to yourself.
Not waiting for that dinner date?
Oh, you come over, I had a great one.
You ain't gonna get a dinner date.
He is, he takes food from me, I make him eat at the tea shop.
Thanks very much, everybody. First of all, if anybody knows any apologies perhaps and stuff like that, I think we have them. No, this is not relevant.
I've got apologies from Hazar, Sue and Sarah. Amanda Hall, Ryan Hall, John London, Susan Lee, Good Time.
And then the new declarations of interest start with the Rockstone capital.
Bye bye.
One, two, three, Rockstone. And then there's town centre team, which is running at the moment. Helen Lockett. Minutes of the last term, you want to help on the 11th of January. The church of the union and...
Sort of a check around the phone, sort of again.
I second that.
All the actions for the minutes have been completed, including inviting Sue Roger. He's sat here in the corner.
So that's, thank you very much for coming along to present to us about the new voting rules that are coming in.
Thank you for this opportunity just to come and speak to you a bit about the voter ID pilot being run this year in Rockstone for the elections. Just to come through a bit about the pilot, happy to answer any questions and hopefully, as I say, there's perhaps a lady concerns that people have that loads of people are going to be disenfranchised because of the pilot. Both ID pilots were first carried out last year and the idea behind them is to prevent electoral fraud. Now, this is not an issue in Rockstone. I've been in Rockstone 15 years and I've not known any incidents. But I think it was felt that it was a good opportunity for both electors and staff to go to experience what it's like to have to produce ID. Because it's the government's intention that 2022 voter ID will be rolled out nationally. So it's coming, so we're going to take part in the pilot. And also that our feedback, hopefully, will be able to influence and shape perhaps the scheme that does come in. So there will be quite a bit of evaluation taken after by the commissioner. And I don't know whether anybody's been contacted by Ipsos Murray in the last week or so. But they will also be doing random phone calls around the electors to see what they know about voter ID pilots at this stage. So we've all got opportunities for people to feedback as well. So the basis of the pilot, Rockstone, is running, is called the mixed model. There's one which is purely photographic, there's one which is purely poll cards, and we're doing the mixed model. Which means that when voters go to a polling station, they'll have to provide ID, which will either be one form of photographic ID or two pieces of non-photographic ID. One piece of non-photographic ID must have their name and address on, the other people, sorry, the other piece can just have their name on. So for example, non-photographic ID could be a poll card, so that obviously has a person's name and address on, so that's quite easy. Other forms of non-photographic ID, perhaps a bank card, could be a council tax bill, a utility bill, bank statement. So I think probably the list, although it's yet to be confirmed, is quite wide. And I think probably most people will have two pieces of ID or be able to find two pieces quite easily. But if they can't, there is still a way that they can apply for what we call a certificate of identity. So let's say, for example, Council Morath rings up and says, "Sorry, I've only got my poll card, what can I do? I haven't got anything else." He can apply for a certificate, we will produce for him from Electoral Services. He can then take that certificate and his poll card down to the polling station and he'll be able to use those two documents to be able to vote. So because we can produce this certificate, there shouldn't be any reason why any elector can't produce two pieces of non-photographic ID. Because if they have a poll card and they lose it, or for some reason it doesn't arrive, and they're relying on that as one piece of evidence, then we can reissue the poll card. So again, by working with the certificate, reissue poll cards, we can make sure that everybody has the necessary identity to enable them to vote. As I said, the list's not been confirmed yet and we did send out a leaflet with the household notification letter, which I hope has arrived with everybody over the last week or 10 days.
Yes, yes.
Oh, right.
All that were buried, not many, they didn't want to work.
Don't know.
Slower off, we're in the centre.
How long ago, hasn't it happened?
But it wasn't...
Where'd you say?
William, no.
Yeah, but if it hasn't arrived, the aim of this was to confirm who is registered at a property. And we also enclosed a leaflet, I'll pass these round, this is just a colour leaflet. And we've also left a poster, which is going to be put up on the board. On the back, you will see the list of identification, acceptable identification. And hopefully, I think you'll see there's quite a wide range. And as I said, the certificate is always the only route if people have not two pieces. There'll also be another leaflet going out to everybody with a council tax bill. And all the information about ID and everything will be on the back of poll cards. So hopefully, somewhere down the line, everybody will pick up something about the pilot and the documents which would be acceptable. If anybody votes by post, this won't be affected at all. Because when you apply for a postal vote, you already give your signature and date of birth. And they're what we call your personal identifiers and we check these when you send your postal vote back. So postal vote is not affected at all. If anybody doesn't fancy the idea of going to a polling station with ID, they can always apply for a postal vote if anybody wants to. They just contact Electoral Services, then we can send out an application form. Also doing some road shows and we are actually coming to Stapleford. I think it's one afternoon, I think it's the 21st of March. And we'll be giving out flyers and answering questions for them to the public as well. I will confirm to the park and perhaps you could let people know where we're somewhere in the town centre. And again, we're always on the end of the phone if anybody's got any queries or any residents would like any further information. So that's all I wanted to say, happy for any questions.
Sue, just a quick one, do they have to register? Is it online for your postal vote?
No.
Do you have to register online or?
No, you can register online if you're not registered at all.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you want to... There is a facility on the online registration to ask for a postal vote and the form comes out to you. But if you're registered and you're not a postal voter at the moment, give us a call to the offices and we'll send one out to you.
I think council level.
The legal driving licence, it's on there anymore?
No, but it's still got, it's still one of the lists of identity that the cabinet office say people can provide.
It's a law, you can pay the driving licence, you won't be bothered.
I'm just providing the list of documents. I mean, a fire answer, if it has got a photo on, but it's a non-photographic.
Well, except for about 90, about 1% out of 100, it probably might struggle. I mean, what's on the back here is quite a lot, isn't it, that you will consume?
Yeah, I think it's a fairly broad list of documents that people can provide.
I think we've got two problems in the past.
No, we haven't in Rockstone, no. It's an opportunity to give electors a chance to find out what it's like having to provide ID in the polling station. And when they go in, the process will basically be the same. When you go to the poll park, they will ask for your identity, they will take that off you, they will ask you to confirm your name and address. They will then check your identity, give your identity back. Because some people are a bit concerned as well, if I take my passport in, are you going to lose it or am I going to get it back? So as soon as the documents are checked, they will be handed back to the elector. They'll then be given the ballot paper and the rest of the process is the same.
But is this fitting with the G D B election too?
Well, we're not asking for any personal information.
Well, I'm sure you might ask for it if we could.
But we're not retaining that information, we're just checking the photograph on the passport if it matches your person standing before us.
Any further questions for? Section six, number six, section 137, engagement, invited to the opening of the annex of St Ellen's Church. Feel me to report back slightly on this one, because I know we had concerns around the table about, A, whether the money would be spent, because it obviously has, and B, whether it'd be spent well. I think that's over the fabric of that place, it is superb. They kept it in keeping with the building, unlike the one that's left for people that's going to come up. And what I like about it, if you do something within the church, perhaps you can see the outside of the church and still it's still giving comfort. I suppose it follows any green agenda we might have in that any small events will be held in there in a more sustainable building than the big 1960 building that they've got at the moment that meets energy. And the thing that we're always concerned about was, is it widespread? It's not just for the Christian community, from what I gather. And obviously, the advertising for it is quite widespread, which is good. Tremendantly, from a visual improvement, to state of the book, because I agree, that building is nice, it's nice to keep it up. I'll go to the Cemetery Road next, that was more of an auditory thing, although the bell struck 13 the day before, I understand. Or the day of it, but it'll be in two minutes late. But hopefully, it will be a germ of regeneration for that particular building, which otherwise has fallen apart. And the gateway that, on that morning, we presented the cheque that we need to present to them. The next section is on, sorry, David, right, Martin. Yeah, let Izzy know if anybody's going to the civil service, sorry, mine's not there. On the 3rd of March, no, it's 10.30, I believe it's 10 o'clock now?
No, it's 10.30.
Still 10.30, 10.30, yeah, the Methodist Church on Utes Road.
Utes Road.
Yeah, I'll be very pleased if people come out. That's 10.30. The next thing's planning, so first of all, on that is the change of use from retail to hot food takeaway on 42th Ave.
That's what we decided at Rockstone, when it was planned, it was on plan, you know, I did ask them for the journey, sorry, defer it. So we could bring it back in, debate it first, and they said no. So that's all of it now, which is, say what was wrong, it's all the same, it's all the same. Just to let you know, I'll put it on afterwards.
Yeah, the next one is 50 Nottingham Road, there was a new one on Nottingham Road today. Change of use from offices to residential at that one, so it's crate front apartments, constructed, little staircase. Yeah, I know parking will turn up every time, I understand.
Yeah, just if anybody doesn't know where it is, it's McLaren Moore, well, because McLaren Moore is our building, there is parking spaces in front of it. I think it means that the bigger building has become derelict. And I think there's also the hope that what would be, I presume, 52 next door, which is a derelict piece of land that hasn't been able to get through. It might actually help in getting something done with that piece of land as well. I can't see any reasons for objecting at all. I know there won't be a parking space for every place, but there are parking spaces there. And I think it's going to use that as a problem.
Right, and Council Brindle?
Yeah, yeah, there's essentially been, there's no reason why we should turn it down. I mean, it is going to make the building look like something. And we're fed up of seeing derelict buildings in our town, so I can't see any problem with it neither.
Any further comments or questions before this question? So all four?
I'd just be sending out support a bit as well, right?
Chair, please take me just a little note, because obviously, you know I was bringing up about parking. What I have...
That's why we told you there wasn't parking there.
No, you're all right. But what I have mentioned, right, to our planning department, right, is the likes of, there are certain times when they need those officers, right, to ask about the available spaces within, that the businesses have got as well. And obviously, there's plenty at Wally Mill, Cambridge House and all that, but there won't be a problem there if they can avoid it out. So what I've actually asked the planning department to do from now on, or the officers, is contact the local ward councillors so they get local knowledge before I keep bringing it up as parking. So that part is all that, you know, and also I've, obviously, we made comments as well. But it might help if sometimes the officers at Rockstone have local knowledge as well, I'll point you that way.
Brilliant, thank you very much. So, also, Council Brindle?
I would totally agree, the council of ground on this one, because the simple reason is right, even though the law not right, you're right.
So, so, so all those are votes for? At least, is you rich as well?
No, I have to stay there to...
All those against? Done again, and one extension, there's no more extensions of that in that's one. And then just a bit further down, number 45 Nottingham Road, Mr James Salisbury's got retained, so he's already done this. Two wall-mounted wooden frame ties, is this not the place that does the phones?
Can I just say that I know that information passed on to me. I'm not being sort of particularly briefly solicit, I don't think that's on the common platform. So can I just declare?
Is it something to bring here or not?
No, it's not sort of, I've merely been, had things said to me that's all, I'm glad that I've had things said to me. I've got bits of concerns, anyone happy with it, you're on as well.
Anybody else who've got comments on that particular?
But Chair, again, he's applying for something that he'd already brought up, isn't he? So this is what I'm going back to about the officers, not... That's what I'm saying. And it's happened a few times, you say, for the time.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I saw it going by on the bus the number of times over this week and I thought, well, that's a bit big. I've got two pictures here that have been sent, one of which is before and one of which is after. The other thing that I wasn't aware of, that apparently this sign lights up, it's highly illuminated. Which I've been buying the dog. And I do think, I do have concerns, because it's right opposite Cambridge Court, where people live. It's opposite whatever number the cogwets is to have the shops in. And it's also going to be highly visible from anyone who lives at Spring Court. Now, so I do have my concerns. And apparently, it's implied that, well, this is just a light for a light, it's huge compared to what was there before. I'll pass these two pictures around here. The other thing that I also noticed earlier this week as I was going by on the bus, is the amount of vehicles that have departed there and the amount of vehicles, it's going to be Mr McGrath's favourite thing, but it's a very narrow road. And whilst I know people go to the sandwich shop next door as pulling up for sandwiches, they look to get sandwiches. Somebody pulling up to have their phone, they're just going to be there for some time. So I've got concerns, and I've got concerns about the size of these signs. And I've certainly got concerns if they are going to be having nice big illuminations on it. I don't think it's fair that they're right opposite places where people live.
Council Brindle, well, actually, actually, I think he's right and I think we ought to be telling the borough that they ought to go and look at it. Because we're not happy, well, I personally am not happy with it. As you say, when it gets off, it's like, it's massive. And I think we ought to be telling the borough that, you know, this is not on, we need to inspect it, it's our own.
Just to make it, just to clarify this, two signs, one on the side of the building, as you can see, and then there's one on the front.
One on the front, which looks like three bowls on the front.
It has its advertising capability anyway.
And we would ask the borough to look at it, the council to look at it, for those who are not happy as it is.
We want to talk a proposal. I propose that we object on the ground that the sign is too big and has the character and the fact that the illumination is going to affect residents across the road.
And to keep clarified, it's happened with a sign at the front and a sign at the side of the road. Overbearing, David, so, yeah.
There are characters that are overbearing. And I think we object to the illumination of them. Because it isn't fair to cross the road.
Maybe we should put proviser in that if they're going to be illuminated, that they can only be illuminated at certain times of night.
I don't think they should be illuminated at all if you live opposite in a block of flats, you don't want to, you know, you don't want a sign glowing through your flat being. And we're just, you know, that people are only just moved into those. I've got no objection to having a sign.
Not, not anything.
But it's done. They've also been running a business for two years without permission.
Everybody clear on Dave's proposal? So vote for Dave's proposal, who's in favor of Dave's proposal, or so, Council Brindle? Dave, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, yes, most of our members. I'll take any against, one abstention, abst, abst, yeah. Good order, abstention.
Abstention.
My apologies.
Well, I'm a bit shocked, because the person that made the sign didn't inform them that they would have needed permission to put a sign that big. Well, yeah, maybe, but, yeah, and he's run against it. But surely, if you've ordered a sign that big, you should be advised that you need planning permission for that. Is that not the case?
It's presumably the company would just take the money.
What are you learning, Bob?
They should ask for permission.
Yes, but what they should do, what they... Surely, we've been...
They've obviously not done so.
Yeah, as we've spoken already, Council of the House.
It has been noted for the enforcement officer to come back four years after the submission date. You never, you never, you never sort of...
Unfortunately, we're having, unfortunately, as I go to the bathroom, we're having too many of these things happening.
I had a few before, around the break.
There's another planning reference to the same, retain use of brown floor from tattoo studio to retail and installation of roller shutters, this is also 45, the same, James, or... You might have some, Council Brindle?
Yeah, I haven't really got any great complaints about the business opening up there and the business doing that. I think the only thing I would like to say is, they've been running that business for at least two to three years without any application. According to the planning things, the actual application for being a tattoo studio, it's about 1997. I can't ever remember it. So they've been running a business there for a considerable amount of time without permission. Now, I've got no objection to running a business and I certainly am going to object to them coming on that. And I haven't particularly got any objection to the roller shutters because I know what happens with businesses. But I think I would like to actually make the point that they have been running this business for a considerable amount of time and what the hell Rockstone can do with it.
That's a big business, mate.
I've no idea.
I think it's this place, this place we're talking about, again.
Yeah, we'll talk about another place.
No, it's the same thing.
It's already covered, isn't it?
Yeah, I know, that's what it's saying.
He's retaining it. They're asking to retain the business that they've been running for a while. They might have planning permission for anything.
It says retain you.
They haven't had permission for the roller shutters, no, that's not made.
They haven't had permission for anything.
They haven't had permission for that, mate, we just go on with it.
Well, I think that's what people want to do.
Okay, so on this second one, it's retail already and it's installation of all the, it's a bit wrong, you know, because the roller shutters are already there.
But it wasn't retail already. It did outside of here.
Any more discussion on that, or should we take a vote?
I'm not putting it, but I'm, talking about what people want, whether they think they should be... I'm not quite in a position, I'm not, talking what people want, whether they think they should be... Sorry, I'm talking out to them. They'd be curious as to whether we turn around and tell them they can't run their business any longer, which I'm not particularly, I don't think they want to do, I don't think we should be discouraging businesses. And I think, and I think it's almost Rockstone's fault, and I know that we can run that way. And perhaps we could put a rider in, and comment.
Is there nothing we can do, would you say to Rockstone, say, I think this is a slip through?
There won't be a reply. And they don't have a, they don't have an enforcement officer at Rockstone. The enforcement officer is based at Erie Wash, we use Erie Wash as enforcement officer. And she has far too much to do. But we should make a comment on that.
I propose that, well, I think we need to put under permissioning, they can both, because both have been erected without planning permission, both the signs, both the, the two signs and the roller shutters.
I don't really feel like objecting to that.
No, I don't object to the business at all, I mean, no, but surely, as a point on it, as, with, the enforcement officer should be informed as well.
Rockstone should have done that.
I mean, all they'll do, Chair, sorry for interrupting, all they'll do is, they'll just say, right, we understand blah, 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 you either take it down, or you find X, Y, or Z, which is the same in a roundabout way, that if they apply for both planning permissions, it's still going to be paying, aren't we? So instead of discouraging...
They can accept applications.
Yeah.
If it's literally, we should take it out.
Yeah, but we still got to apply them, right, for the...
Well, that's all the application, that's why it's two applications. Somebody wants to vote and take it out.
So...
The money makes hundred thousand.
Is anybody willing to make a proposal on this?
Well, I, I propose we put that down, but we accept that we want, the only problem with the application is, is that both have been done out of, the planning, we can't, and so our objections are, I propose, our objections are, is that the, the enforcement, well, our objections are that the enforcement officer should have been made aware of what went on.
We can do that as a proposal as well, but what about this, this application as it stands? Would we support that, or would you...
Yeah.
What, the first one or the second one?
Second one.
So...
We've already proposed the second one.
So this second one, shall we have a vote on that one, and then go for your... As a second, as a second...
I'll second that, that we allow them to retain that.
Yeah.
Change of deuce to business, I'll second that, Andrew.
So this is just for the business at the moment, so change of deuce?
Well, that's what I'm saying. The change of deuce and the shutters. Well, those change of shutters, if you want a business, these days, you don't have a mobile shop without a shutter.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I'm happy, I think.
On that note, can we have a, a show of hands for... Again, we've got full hands, uh, and one absolute... And then, then the proposal to...
The proposal can go as comments, Chair, really, can't it? On, on the second proposal, it can go as comments, because really, it is a comment about what we're all saying.
Can I suggest that those comments can be sent to the enforcement officers as well from this council?
Right.
Because the, the amount of time that has been there, then there was an enforcement officer at Rockstone.
I think we still have one.
No, she's based at Erie Wash.
It's a shared service.
It's Erie Wash, she works for Erie Wash, it's a shared service with Erie Wash, we don't have one at Rockstone. You have to ring her at Erie Wash.
Christine, now, how's you doing?
Christine?
Christine Dambly.
Right, very well.
It's Christine Dambly, is the enforcement officer.
Because we're not criticizing her.
No, I'm, I'm alright.
Because that, it, it was what was done previously that nobody played, they had a target business.
I'm trying to say that Christine Dambly also serves at Rockstone, has an office at Rockstone.
Okay, but she's based at Erie Wash. I'm fully aware, but we don't have one based solely at Rockstone, as we used to have.
I'm sorry, but she does.
But we didn't have one at Rockstone.
I'm sorry?
We had one at Rockstone, totally at Rockstone, Sarah Hall.
Right, so, but this, now we share one?
Yes, and I'm fully aware, that's what I said. But it would have been done before.
So this, this proposal actually pushed them to, to think about the future, so, so, proposal, second, are we voting on, um, for that proposal to be sent? Anybody against the proposal? Abstain, abse... Abstention? Right, so, on number nine, the health and safety report will come to our conference.
Um, well, basically, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. To health and safety of the building, things seem a bit neglected, to be honest. Um, just slight things, however, just wanted to inform you that the gas boiler's recently been serviced, that we need high potential shoulders, we're fully compliant with the law, and the fire alarm service has been completed, you've got staff training, and we've had one fire drill so far. CCTV, door access system update, which was agreed at the last meeting. The work's going to be completed shortly, next week, just so that they can all be up to date. So it can be a better system than the one we've got now. And it is, it has gone out of tender, but the successful company was WEC, who already do an entry roll on. And just for information that, I've been looking at all the health and safety things in my role, since I'm new, and the asbestos and the gas boiler, fire eggs all up to date, I've had five, something, Ray... Burton. Ray Burton. Fire electrical test, and the PAT test is going to be done shortly as well. So just letting it all up to date.
That's how, that's how, Counselor, good question.
Yeah, well, I think, you're, you're quite right, I think most of these things have been left in the air. I want to thank the town dark, I'm sure I'll ask a member here, and the Digo that these jobs have been done and brought up to date, because we have to have these things done by law. So we've done a good job, thank you very much.
Absolutely, yeah, it's one of those boring things that we do often, we simply have that all, don't we?
Thanks very much.
Number ten is allotments. Councils, the meeting has been arranged for the garden holding in front of the A, February seventh. And then, on eleven HS2, Counselors, who requested, the public at the, uh, or asked for a member of the public at the meeting, Counselor, say, who was worried that the upheaval of dramatic alterations to the town would not be in due publicity, remarked that Trowell seemed to be better, getting more attention than us. And this member of the public was afraid that when the time comes, at the centre of the red, the presidency, well, no, let's hit them. I suppose you can't disagree, she knows information on the council website, but says that everyone does not have access to the internet. And we hope that they can, we can discuss it, if you get any fresh ideas, how to publish this as a major event. I understand several people have been to recent meetings, probably others that we can do that.
I think the only thing I'd like to say is that, we had three public meetings, we had a public meeting at Trowell, we had two public meetings in Staffordshire that were open for people to come along. There's also mentioned at the cap meeting, and we have responded to the attempts. We did go to a meeting on Thursday, Wednesday this week, when Paul got into there, and to be perfectly honest, he only wheeled out exactly the same spear as he did at the other meetings, there was nothing further we could do. Quite what else comes through month, I don't know, and actually not yet. You can't exactly tell us, so I don't think we need to discuss it any further unless people want to. Because until you've got more information...
Public, yeah, public responsibility.
Should have been here to say it.
Chair, the only thing he did say, Dave, was that the, the results of the, oh, the bits and bobs will come back in the summer, didn't you? That's the only thing I can suggest, so they'll come back in the summer.
Well, he actually did say one, that after their consultation, when they put the new plans together, you're quite right, then they'll come back in the, in the summer. Didn't say next summer, but they'll come back in the summer. Let's move on if we can.
Uh, the twelve traffic and highways, minutes from eighteen January.
I would like to say how well the Leeds minister puts it, by the young leader of the council. And everything on there, which everyone's got a copy of, I believe, is that it's like all the things on there, which we have looked into many times before, we've got to keep chipping away, and we hope that we will get what we're after.
Do you have, Counselor, here?
Um, yeah, I think everybody's been sent these meetings, these minutes, some of which are actually things we're not going to get rid of. The items that particularly concern me are the matters arising from the last meeting, Pimfoylee, for Albion, I've, I've been approached by a number of residents who are extremely worried about what tracks are going to be. Quite a few of them have suggested to me, but apart from the idea of just the parking that is a problem on there, is that we all already consider that it may be ideally one way, so that people aren't shooting up and down there, to encourage them to use the main road to get to Albion, not zomping up and down Pimfoylee. That's one of the things that resonates, as you have it, not my suggestion, but I can see the sense in that, that perhaps making it one way so that there's not going to be trucks going backwards and forwards and so on. Because there is lots of problems with parking, I think, sorry. Yeah, I, I've got a couple of other points I wanted to make, but that was the first bit I wanted to really just put to people about, the idea of looking at that before, putting something there before Albion gets completed. Because there is always problems at that junction at the top because of the nasty evil bend. And if they're a bit, if the vehicle comes the wrong side of the road, we must remember that there is a fire station down there.
Put that forward as a home, let's make it every time first as a proposal.
Yeah, a few things, I did have a copy, someone's made it off of there. I contacted very much of a lot of the things which are on there, from what I see here, or, I've tested pollution.
I was going to come down to the other stuff, I thought Carla got something to add to that thing by the way. That's why, that's why I stopped, so that Carla got the opportunity to...
Yeah, so, so that, I've contacted him about that, and he's got back to me, basically said it's someone else's department, but he's told them to figure it all out, and costings and everything, so we'll just take that to the bag, and then someone will have to put that in the pocket. Hopefully it's possible, hopefully we'll see what happens. And then there's another thing on there where my things, it also went for a break, I'm losing my voice here, so I pass it down to Bob, if you want to read it out. So, I thought it was a pretty good idea, but it's, that is getting the parents dropping the kids off. Not very smart, get them to play, and get them to drop the golf, and then drop the kids off, and then that's all, that'd be forgotten. So that's a pretty good idea, which one?
So it's also written to you, dear Counselor McPrae, that confirmed the car park can be used as accordance with the governing restrictions whereby every motorist can obtain a free voucher up to one hour's fee of charge, the parking machine and one occasion each day. This facilitates either dropping off or pickup from the school, the parents must however remember that to obtain the free voucher and clearly display this through inspection. If parents in the morning drop off, park in the car park, and then at a pickup park on street, they carry out the same but in reverse, there should free up space on the street. However, it would require parent participation for it to work effectively. If a parent decided they're not to park on streets as close to the school gates as possible, all the time, then the rotation would not work. Responsibility would be proportionate, and whilst this would be an alternative to everyone parking on street, it would require willingness to participate in the rotation of vehicles between pickup and drop off, on street or off street on the same day.
This is a good idea, we could work with some people, parents, just for one day, but we, we've tried, and that's the response, so keep messages. And then the last one I've got on track, trying to sort of, is outside Albion, I bet you see all that dotted around there, and the trucks keep coming in and out and everything, I bet if you heard someone go off, went to park in the lane, messed himself up, or quite bad, when it all, the soil that's on there, just went, do you know what I mean? Yeah. And there's been cars starting all over the shop, and they're all coming in and out, cleaning. I've contacted, um, Laura at County, and also planning at Rockstone, and when they get on County as well, and asking if we could just get the sweep, I would say, the sweep for that, a bit more often, and especially between pick up and drop off, you know, our school, and especially the school up there, very, very friendly sort of. It's a shame they've got something on site that you have to try to clean your wheels or something.
Just, just a matter of, I rely on that to them, Carlos, next, yeah.
That's, that's it.
Because from the, from the seven tree bell, I've noticed it on that road, at that time it was slippery, motorcycles slid by, and the car, he went in, and I had a word with the two officers, ran them to there, um, or... Oh, I can't think of the word, but they were good in that they were inspecting, and I had a word with them, I said, oh, what's happening? He says, well, we have got the sweepers going up and down. I said, well, these big rocks are a problem. He said, yeah, the captain, he said, and I said, well, what about the tar falling, is that being taken over the trucks? He said, oh, yes, yes, and at my moment a truck went by, and we all looked at it, no tar falling. Uh, we're going to have to have a word, thank you very much, and by the looks of things, things are a little bit tidier.
Yeah, because every day when you sit there, there is, there is, there is, spraying the road.
Yes, so they are doing it, they are doing it. So, Counselor, bottom.
So, so it's the entrance that Albion goes to be on Pimfoylee, so I've got it, it's on the road.
Looks to us, it's going to be that.
Yeah, so, so Pimfoylee, why does that need to be one way?
Because what we're suggesting, sorry, come on, what the, what they're saying and suggesting, what's going to happen is, people are going to zomp up Pimfoylee, onto Darky Road, and back, and also that what they're, in particular, not so much that, it's similar, but but they're going to come out of Albion, straight down Pimfoylee, to avoid the traffic lights.
They're going to melt the fire.
And, and it's particularly, I think the residents are more concerned by the traffic whisking out of Albion and down Pimfoylee around that nasty bend.
You're horrible, Dave, I don't want to pick up what you say.
Thank you, Pat. That's, that's, that's what I'm thinking, yes, and it's not that they'll go even for a day, but they'll use it as a ramp run about.
Counselor, bottom, sorry, if you put your hand up earlier, there's a thing to be answered, or? Yeah, that's okay, Counselor, bring it up. No, okay, there's... Right, does that leave us then with, sorry, Counselor?
Uh, I was, I was going to come in about the foot on the road, that, take it out, what are you talking about? It is definitely the contractor's responsibility, he should do that every single day. Make sure it's clear, and if they don't, it gets fine.
I think the law, because I live on the, the Council bottom.
Yeah, just saying, I mean, I do the school run twice a day, and I'm up and down there, and the road sweeper is every day, but there was a lady that was on there, and she was driving around, yeah, she was just driving around, the roads, bits, sweeping bits weren't actually there, but also the weather conditions were, no, but also the conditions over the last two weeks were really bad, we said we were fighting a losing battle, but I think hopefully I've got it out now, but yeah.
So any more, any more, I mean, comments before a possible proposal? Okay, then, we're not, probably next one, because...
Uh, really, I, I think we just like to suggest that they have a look into the possibilities of improving Pimfoylee, and looking into whether, no, that's County. And looking, looking into whether it would be a good idea, you know, we can't, I, I don't know whether that's the only thing, but pointing out the difficulties that we've put on there, and asking them to look into the possibility that a one-way may improve it. And, yeah, some other possibilities, but pointing out the difficulties, I think, rather than waiting until difficulties arise later.
Are we going to pay to resurface Pimfoylee before we start?
No, it's due for the resurfacing anywhere at some stage. I understand that's why it hasn't been resurfaced.
Right, the sound of that is a second of for, for Counselor Pearson's proposal, and so take a vote on it, all those in proposal... Right, the sound of that is a second of for, for Councilor Pearson's proposal, and so take a vote on it, all those in proposal, voted in favour of it. I can't see what, Chris has got his hand up.
It's always on his hand, or there, there you go.
And if we get, so we get an abstentions, I've got it right this time. Right, so.
Perhaps, I, I don't want to take this as a secret bit enough, but, because I don't want to do the whole thing, but I think there are a couple of other matters that I think it would be worth the town council actually putting some support in. Um, which are basically, the two items on this, uh, where certainly matters raised, the first two items. I think, and perhaps I can fault, certainly the first two, because they involve road improvements. And I'd like to consider that we, we highlight to them, rather than just the individual council, that we can actually send the councils to fall, and that we would like to consider that. Um, first one where we had some people came and talked us about, is the fact that the congestion at Toden Lane. Um, particularly in the mornings, stints, um, and the likely improved more congestion, that they're finding that they now cannot get out of those particular roads, which I'll drive Western and Darky Lane, because the traffic queues right back. So what they were suggesting, I think eminently so sensible, is that we request some box junctions on there. So that there would be ample space for people to get in and out of those roads, rather than having to depend on the goodwill of drivers letting them out. Um.
If that junctions aren't wide enough by.
I know they're not, but it would be some sort of. But it's still gonna give some, some people do accept it.
Just a little.
Well, that's a suggestion.
So we'll do that as a proposal?
Well, we need to do something now, it's several lines, I don't even say it, so. We need to do something, there's no way we can control that traffic, all right?
So a lot of, uh, so a proposal basis, Dave, we have people wording for that?
Well, they're very looking to some improvements, I think, you know, suggest box junctions.
Second that, Councilor, and all those four.
Or we can put it as a suggestion as a possibility or other improvement.
Yeah. Were there any against? Want to get?
It was the money to.
Any abstentions after, or any abstentions for that?
I have abstentions, I think you have.
Anything else on that, maybe?
Um, sorry.
Any anything else on that?
Yeah, uh, the other one we thought was, that was brought up to us or whatever, was there having particular problems on the corner, given that we know the amount with vehicles parked there all day. And a nice simple suggestion would, if there's a nice little double yellow line, because it shouldn't be parked on that junction anyway, that a double, like, yellow line purely around the junctions to stop them parking there all day.
Well, we've had that, Chair, but we've had them all, me and myself in particular have had them out for that no end stands, so obviously, yeah, from all the full backing, there is something simple like that, well, hold for it.
Yeah.
Councilor, we would recommend then, not simple, we'd normally be talking about this, um, how to say, um, and there should be lies there, um, and we would suggest that, um, you know.
Think of the box on the.
Then, Councilor.
Could, could we also ask the county councillor, if you could put forward one of his ideas, uh, for the, uh, you can ask, you know, as well, just the county councillors in, because they, they have to put in ideas for everything, you can't keep them in travel and costs, haven't they? You know, they're a lot of representatives, thank you for the help, so, you know, let's try it, don't we? There was left for seven ideas in a year, haven't they?
Councilor, sorry, what's that, this? Down to the long, anything else to bounce back on?
So on that last point, proposal, a second one again then? So a proposal for.
All right, all right.
All the others in favour? I think that's, any against, or against, any abstentions?
Yeah, the other thing.
Centered one letter in the.
Well, we can say it, um, sorry, I've been talking a minute. Yeah, there is gonna be loads of over from Mordich Lane, one of the things that's a lot to confirm, that Mordich Lane is going to be used for a direct route to the HS2. For lorries to their depot, and that, as I understand, Mordich Lane is due for resurfacing at some stage. Um, it's gonna be shut at some stage in the near future, because it's gonna have a gas work over it, but.
Ten weeks it's going to be.
But, um, that we suggest that they look at improving the situation there, uh, some residents there suggest the possibility that instead of the grass urges that they make. Parking facilities there, so, because so that if vast amounts of lorries are going down there, there aren't, there aren't cars parked on the road. But I think really just suggesting possible improvements to Mordich Lane in view of what might happen, might get some money out of it, just to. Um, you can read what it says, what was the idea, but we're not saying that's what we want. The same, considering these possibilities, and, you know, they might, some of the traffic on highways might come in, say, the far better way of doing it, that's fine, at least get them to look at it.
I agree with that. Yes, okay, a proposal, a second, in favour of that?
Yeah.
How does anybody, uh, get anything from you?
Yeah.
And we're wondering, do you want to?
We don't ask, we don't get doing.
No, I'm sorry. I think overall traffic at all, then.
I think that's, that's, I've covered everything that's, that I think is really important, but I think the other things we can sort out.
Broxton Borough Council, uh, capital grant of future high streets fund. So it's a number thirteen.
Thirteen, is that you for some?
Did you want to say anything at all?
I always want to say something, if you can. Well, that's over here at this time.
Wow, I said that in the voice of John.
That's over here at this time. But, I won't make a comment.
Yeah, I can, yeah. We're all getting that.
Well.
This is how many of us?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, that's not attention.
First of them, sorry.
Yeah, this, this plot on hand table is not a new thing that's been sent in, this is the older one, it was just so people could see what was it before. Um, and if there was any ideas on there, we could probably get it out and pull it off. That, that was my kind of thing, but if I'm really right, isn't this one, um. Where is it? It's, you know, that's the county, and I'm sort of, like, there's things on here we could pick at, and you can perhaps go to the town car, and some people. Some, sometimes when funding comes on, it's match funded, or, or you need, you know, you need ideas and that, so it'd be nice if, at some point, you know, obviously it's gonna be the next administration now, I think that's the correct way to say it. Should have an interview, people come together, come up with loads of ideas, and then have a, an ideas bank, and when these things fall along, we can say, right, so then, we've already got it, we've got the quotes and everything, I never been out again, the, the revenue budget is so large, then just renew the quote. So if we've got a stack of information, maybe like an information bank of, of ideas, what, what we want, and when these funds come along, instead of sending emails out to everybody, everyone reading it, they'll never get them, we've got this stack, it's all ready to go, haven't we? And then we can see what we can get, and I'm sure, you know, future generations, people will be sitting around in your whiteboard, we can get some cracking stuff for the town. Because there's an absolute tonne on the out there, and people say there is a bit of a close, you've got such ideas, and your ideas have got to be, sometimes it's got to be somewhat tiny, might be on your street signs, I don't think it would like to slip. Or sometimes it's got to be somewhat massive, and you've just got to think bigger than you've ever thought before, and we can get these things, we need ideas in the paper, don't we, so that, that was my.
Excellent ideas, it is.
I have them every now and again.
Absolutely correct. That's similar, I mean, obviously the new administration will need to talk about, as Richard pointed out, most of it is match, match funding, or match funding, isn't it? So you put X, we put Y, and that unfortunately, as we found out over a family, whatever, every time we try to get this type of funding, because we have maxed it, we haven't got it. So I think whoever, we need to sit down seriously and look at that, and for our richest set of schemes that we want, i.e. the simple things we've always wanted, the painting of this. Better benches through the town, because you have to walk miles before most of the pensioners can sit down, or whatever, there's no benches between X and Y, within a mile. Simple things that every time we have to fight to try and get, and, and if we do something like this, and move forward, at least, we'll have something there, and like Richard said, all the ideas are in the bank, and we all sit here and.
Not literally, I don't, yeah, whatnot.
Yeah, whatnot, but we all sit here and literally agree, instead of falling out all the time, right, we'll have four benches, right, we've got this, let's do that.
All great, yeah, that sounds legitimate.
Well, unfortunately, I totally agree with Richard and John there. You won't have time to put it into next first round of this, there's no dead of that money.
We may, right, yeah.
I would suggest, obviously, as you suggested, the bank going at the next, whoever the administration's going to be, that these sorts of things should be prepared to ready, as, as Richard and John said. So that we have got it right, so that we can put it in, and we obviously will get the cost and everything right, so we can submit the whole thing. Because when the last one went in, it wasn't done by us. So I, I, I totally agree with that, and next administration should deal with this, and obviously, it doesn't matter a member of public or a council. If people are bringing, sending in suggestions at the right time, let's look at all of it.
Uh, I'd like to abide trees as needles, if I can talk about the government.
Quite a, quite a few people on the labour plan, so, a lot of it was then too, where it's like reiterate the sorts of things that Richard said, that everybody saw this future high streets fund, it was sneakily released on the twenty sixth of December, obviously because everyone was looking at funding opportunities on that weekend, uh, it was released by an district housing unit, and I think it was like something like six hundred and eighty five million pounds is being released for projects for high streets that are suffering. Um, maximum that you can apply for is twenty five million, but they're expecting projects of five to ten million to come forward. And what really appealed to me about this is it's exactly spot on, say, because it was actually outlining the size of the community for the Borough Council, we're only in a box, as then you have to put forward one proposal for one town centre. And it says that it has got to be a town centre that is facing significant challenges, which we know Stateville is, because out of all of the district centres in Borough, Kimberley, Eastwood, Stapleford. Stapleford has got the lowest occupancy rate for buildings, so we qualify for being the most needy case in Borough, okay? But also it's, um, needs to be the case that we can mention it forward, because we're going to compete for this nationally, but in Stefan Saunders' comments about our labour and plan, he actually said that we are supposed to be the northern gateway for HS2. So I think that puts us in a national picture as a really good position to actually apply for this funding. And this one is, um, it's my good, because it says that we can apply for money to, uh, to acquisition and assembly of land, uh, improve us for the public transport access. Um, supporting change to improve housing delivery and densification, and supporting the adoption of the high street to respond to changing technology. And there's all issues that we keep seeing again and again and again, when we talk to people out in the community, that they've got problems with transport, they've got problems with, they've got your shops. And so absolutely, this is, uh, like you're saying, this is the big ideas that we needed to put forward. The deadline for this is close, um, initial submissions need to be by the twenty second of March, but the good news is, um, it doesn't look like we need to have a particularly detailed plan. Because if, um, they will look through the proposals and look at which are the most needy cases, and then most needy cases go on to phase two, where there's actually funding released to enable you to produce a detailed plan. So you know what we're saying about the help that we needed for the labour and plan that we're really getting, we could actually get some funding in advance to actually draw up pocket plans, get the cost, get it all done. Um, then, of course, then once the final submission's going, where you've got your detailed plan, then it goes forward, and then you can see if we get the funding to upgrade. So, um, in terms of the actual application, the first part is about the geography of the area, so that should be very easy to put together. Uh, the second, uh, point is about the significant challenges faces Stapleford, again, we could write that very easily, these are only like five hundred, seven hundred and fifty word things, it's not only a document, but I think they want quite a lot of supporting evidence. And it then goes on to say why, why it should be significantly for Broxto, right, when you replace, and then they do want a breakdown of the source of news that you would like to receive. And also you're saying about match funding, they're not saying match funding, they're saying looking at other sources of income, so it doesn't necessarily have to be matched, it doesn't necessarily have to come from the government, they say it comes from business. So if you're getting enough people interested, we could actually put together a really good document. Now, I have emailed Stefan Saunders, I appreciate after the part two of the plan examination, I'm probably not his favourite person, but he hasn't actually got back to me. Um, so I don't know whether there are plans for Broxto to put forward an application, so it's kind of also sort of looking on to the Borough Councils in the room. Do you know whether Broxto have actually moved on this, and if not, can we please give somebody a bit of a nudge to find out if they're prepared to do this, because I've got nowhere. Um, further evidence that obviously we need for this application is to show that the town centres are actually used for diversity of purposes. So I have actually compiled a survey, which people, nicely filled in for us, about their shopping habits in Stapleford. Um, looking at the results, there's nothing out of the ordinary in these documents, um, we know that people don't travel very far towards it, to the town centre in the city, or do you think to pop in sort of every day or a few times a week? Um, they spend less than an hour here, um, that seems to be the general trend, and when they're here, they're shopping, and it's, oh, see, there's, oh, pushing for telling you all kinds of things, that they're using the town centre to pull them. But interestingly, what other town centres nearby do you visit, and I thought everyone's gonna say Nottingham, and actually, most people, Port Easton. So it's, I didn't ask anything about online shopping, because I thought we're not gonna try and convert people who shop online to come to town centres, we want the people who shop in town centres to find out where they're going, what they're going for. And can we encourage them to share something that we need to do that? So the reasons that, um, people are getting, going elsewhere to other town centres is question six, and it's, my, my common answer was, I can't buy many of the things I need in Stapleford, which is no surprise. Second most common option was there's a better choice of shops, third most commonly, more pleasant shopping in my area, so there's nothing there that we don't really already know. Um, then there was some open ended questions, which I've kind of put at the end about for people just to put comments, there's a lot of comments that people put, I'm not gonna give them all, but the same recurring things, it seems to be a lot of, um, interest in food shops, there's the comments about no supermarket, there's comments about poor parking. Which I thought was quite bizarre, and the fact that most, like, most people, a mile away, so this is actually the sort of evidence that we're difficult to get, so we can put a little bit of pressure on Borough Council to say, look, people want this, this is what we need, um, and we can actually get this for you, but yeah, this is trouble everyone. So I think that's about it, did I get?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very good.
What's our next move on this? What do people think our next move would be for the Council?
Um, yeah, I think it's very unfortunate the timing of this, um, like everything else, like our meeting that we had at Broxto, the various people on that Wednesday. Um, very sad that they're putting a timing in, went right near the elections, and they're not giving them a lot of time. Um, I like the idea of this far more than the match funding from the county council, because it's much more open ended and whatever, and it's not requesting that we have a vast amount of money in it. Not even requesting that Broxto to. not even requesting that Broxton do. Obviously, I don't, I suspect that we're not a high enough council to actually apply for this, it requires it's got to come from Broxton. But they were, I, I doubt it was very much that came out very positive, well, there were lots of things that did come positive from our meeting, it was all very vague, that they were listening. I did at least get an impression that they were listening, there was Ruth Hyde there, and whatever. I think perhaps, on the basis of the fact that they did ask our views, unfortunately, it was only, uh, one, two, three.
Five.
Five councillors there. Um, but I, I think that perhaps it might be an idea to highlight this and to send this to Broxton, and hopefully you as Broxton councillors, they can also suggest this sort of thing, because they mentioned this last night, um, on Wednesday night at all. You would have thought they ought to be aware of this, and would be thinking of, hang on, this is a good way to do it. So I'd like to suggest that we highlight some of this, say that we've written this up, and perhaps, um, might be an idea, as Ruth Hyde was taking the notes, that we send this to Ruth Hyde.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty pleased with it, because that was really interesting, and, and the interesting thing is, is that Stapleford fits the picture exactly. This is just what we've been asking for and asking for, and what we need, because it's dying, and it's got to be.
We can finally admit it, John. Sorry.
I think it's all. Sorry, can you support these? Jonathan, can I speak without being interrupted? Um, so, I, I think this is an excellent idea, I think we councillors should go and see Stefan Saunders as well, and send him carry it forward, and not be hard, because that's, definitely, it's not the answer. So it's, it's entirely, it, you know, up to us now, and I, I think it's excellent, and I would love to sort it out, get this on there, over time.
Any other councillors that would like to, the council?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm ninety percent sure lots of the way, like, this grant for the projects, I'll, I'll find out on Monday, and I'll, so, you know. I'm not hundred percent, I'm about ninety percent sure they are. Which may be, that could be fifty percent, or, I'll find out on Monday, because possibly they'll.
Who, who, they, they've applied for?
In defence, Stapleford, over.
For the town Stapleford, I'll find out on Monday, yeah, Stapleford, not, not for Eastwood. Probably one of the mentioned.
I would expect them to win.
I'll, I'll find out on Monday.
There's no further comments on that, the next.
And I'm proposing, we do actually write to Ruth Hyde, as to give these people the support as well, right? Look, you know, we discussed it here, and we think this, we're ideal for this situation.
Yeah, I'm actually stronger than you.
Well, yeah, because they did appear to be listening Friday, as I thought they would read the paper, or sort of suggest this. So I think we should at least highlight this, and say, in view of our discussion, and that we were at on Wednesday night, that we think this was an ideal opportunity to take forward some of the ideas.
Dave Posing, and David Grizzly second, and who's in favour of this? Do you examine us, um, and, so there will be that obsession or?
Can we, Mr Mayor, can we make sure that we thank the reader?
Yes, absolutely, thank them, that's an excellent job, obviously. Right, we'll be onto number fourteen, we should pay them, and there's a page, should be a page, shall we?
Yeah.
And it's just, we know what paid.
Unless anybody's got any comments to make on that.
The election fund of four thousand pounds before, was that for by-elections? Or was that for forthcoming election made?
Yeah, it is about elections, full stop, so it means, um.
You can't put that in reserve.
It's really, well, there, there is in reserve, make sense, you can see. There is four thousand there, there will be four thousand that will go in, in April, to make it up to eight thousand. And there was four thousand budgeted for, which will make it twelve thousand, because the election bill will come out of next year's budget. So, but it, that is for the main, or any election. Um, we've tried to aim that it was for, that we know that it normally costs about twelve thousand pounds for one election, for the whole of the town. Um, so there should be, although it doesn't look like there's twelve thousand there, effectively there is.
Yes.
Um, and that, that will mean that then we'll have to build up again. Um, my elections are a problem that have just come in extra, um, that's why we've had to start from twelve thousand. Um, but it, obviously, it's a thing that we should be built up each year, because we know we're going to get that. The only time it becomes cheaper is if there is a general election at the same time, when it's shared. Does that, that answer the question?
Yeah. Is that what you can do, have to say, or can we, or should everybody else? Okay, and then leads us to the next one, which is the date of the next meeting, which was seventeen.
Well, what, what's that?
What's that?
Like you say, how's the civic cost? Why does the civic service, it costs so much to run?
Well, the civic service doesn't cost a lot.
No, what?
It's civic, it's in the, civic costs, shouldn't you?
It's everything.
It's civic cost, not just a civic service.
No, I know it is, but in chunking, because that is a civic test.
Sorry, I didn't hear what I said there.
So we think, we go to the civic, to the civic service, you know?
Well, the civic service is coming up, the only expenditure is going to be refreshments, tea, coffee, the church doing that, we're contributing. Um, and there'll be a cake, um, and, um, basically, that's, that's it, because, is it the church?
I did read it, it said two thousand.
The running total, is that?
Two thousand, six hundred.
Running total, that's for the whole year. So, you know, five thousand pounds is budgeted, and so really, it's good housekeeping, only two thousand, six hundred can spend. So, and obviously, when it's set the budget based on the previous year, so this year, you're not spending as much, that's how I see it.
Yeah, it's quite right, it is, yeah, that, the civic cost for everything, not just for civic service.
Flowers, barns.
Competition, everything.
Everything.
Doesn't all, can I do that, because it not also include the playdate?
Well, you.
The playdate is part of the civic cost, which we get, which we pay for Broxton, and that's the largest expense, and that's included in the civic cost, because it doesn't come out of our running costs and our admin, so that is part of a civic event. So when it says civic cost, that is any civic event, with the exception of remembered Sunday, because remembered Sunday is put separate. But any other civic event comes out of those civic costs in total. And that's what the civic cost figure is for, and we have, over the last two years, reduced it drastically, yeah, um, from what it used to be. But the, but the main cost out of that fund that's been spent so far is the playdate, which is fifteen hundred quid. So that's fifteen hundred pounds from the playdate.
And then, yeah, and then your, and your mayor's cost, um, for when the mayor, deputy mayor, all that's taken into that. So we, it is cancelled, um, I can be done extremely well on it, and I don't think there's anything that anyone should worry about.
Anything else on finance, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't notice you. Okay, so so we'll be fifteen, so the next one will be, um, meeting with seventeen remain.
And the annual meeting.
So, the last one, so it gets big.
Very nice, yes.
Thank you very much for being here.
Um, that's for the meeting to twenty eighteen, that's eighteen, it's the eighteen, thank you very much.